Okay, we'll call this committee the whole meeting to order. I'd like to acknowledge that we are holding this meeting on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. We have a record of attendance. Go ahead, councillor.
Councillor Dares is going to be just a few minutes late, so I ask that we excuse him until he has the time to get here.
Certainly. Seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And the deputy mayor is actually on virtually, so he can participate fully, just as if he were here. No absent with regrets. Any declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? You can declare at the time of the agenda item. And approval of agenda. Any additions or deletions? Go ahead.
I'll move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so we have a presentation. We have the waste management project by... Yep, I'll get that up there.
That's as small as I can make it.
Yep, he'll just... There he is, way down the corner.
Perfect. Good job, man.
Isn't it great when a plan comes together by accident? So, the environmental project proposal. We have Adam, Amelia, Ashley, Carter, Lillian, Morgan, or most of them. So, welcome, folks. Thanks for coming in. And just make sure you speak right into the microphone. You can introduce yourselves, and we're really excited with what you're gonna share.
Hello?
Hi.
I'm Adam.
And I'm Morgan.
I'm Carter.
And we're going to share with you our proposal of how we can make the area around our school in the town a bit better. I'll do this one. We are grade 10 O2 students from YCMHS. O2 is a program where it basically opens up opportunities outside of school, and we get to figure out our career after school and stuff like that. And we get to do a bit of hands-on stuff, like this project we've been working on. And LSF is funded, learning for sustainable future. I don't really know about it too much.
We had done a series of, like, online meetings in science, between science and some of our O2 courses, to learn about how different things in the world can change to be more sustainable for longer, and how we can change it. And then we were given a small sum of money to really try to do different things to change some problems that we see in our own community. Some were like birdhouses, bat houses. There was some ways to use recyclable bottles or melt jugs to grow plants in, since that kind of plastic can be recycled, but it's more of a pain to recycle. And you can use it that way, and you could grow crops in it for a longer time before it's no good and you have to recycle it. So that was where our idea had started, and where we started looking around to come up with this presentation.
What's the problem? The problem is, around our school, there's too much garbage, and it doesn't look appealing. And it can cause hazards if it blows into the road. And there's no garbage cans, which is why there is so much litter, because if you have to walk long distances, nobody wants to hold on to their garbage to carry it to the nearest garbage can.
The affected areas that we focused on were around the school. We had come to the school about the school stuff, and there was a cleanup shortly after. There's some older trashcans that they're gonna maybe try to retrofit, especially down around the school parking lot. But we noticed on our lunchwalks from the high school down to the Petrocan, that once you leave the school, there's no garbage cans till you get to Petro. Or you can stop at the Yarmouth Wesleyan Church, and there's a dumpster, and there's garbage cans inside. But they're not open on Friday, so you can't go in, so there's only the dumpster. And so we noticed that as we're walking from Petro, there's a lot of garbage on that kind of strip. And most of it ends up around the exit, from the Mariner Center, the road that goes through there. I forget the name of it. The Haley Road. Right on the corner, as you can see, there's a dot. Yeah, there's a dot here. This is Petrocan and the Dodge dealership. From here, at this point here, is where we noticed there's a lot of garbage, like your candy bars, chips, paper plates from pizza and stuff. Just a lot of garbage that, from your food, that's just thrown on the ground and left. And as you keep going, there's the paramedic station. But when you get down along the rock wall, we notice there's a lot more like cans and bottles, and it blows all over the field into the neighbors', or the people that live their yard, and on their houses. And they, like, the school gets complaints and stuff. The farmer that mows the field for the hay for his cattle complains that there's garbage, like wrappers and stuff, when he rolls it. And at one point, he did have a cow ingest some kind of wrapper, and he had to pay somebody to come and help the cow. And that's kind of the affected areas we noticed the most.
Oh, yeah. We had thought about the problem and looked around the affected area that we... We found... Yeah. If three trashcans around the area would make quite a bit of a difference to the area. And we highly... We think they would be highly used and cut down on litter on the roads and areas of the community. And so... I'm struggling, sorry. The community and the tourists would find Yarmouth more beautiful and welcoming. The community would be more happy and help take care of the area We, as a school, there's been several cleanups. And around the student parking lot, we've done. And... Yeah. So we have a big school community of students who care and want to give back and can all do better. So let's try to do better and give everything we have. We've done a few... Yeah, so we've figured a few places for trashcans along the area. I'll start by the field here. We realized that you can't just throw a trashcan next to the area, because when emptying a trashcan, you can't have people walk in and park their truck.
We...
Yeah, so somewhere around this area, we believe it might be good to have a trashcan there, because it's accessible. And it's also where we find, like, on our lunch route, where you, like, for those that walk and eat, you're usually done around this point. But some down here also, like, we find that we're usually through with wrappers and stuff around here as well.
We understand that, like, for you guys' sake, it's gotta be more... It's gotta be easily accessed, to be emptied, and so it's not such a bother to somebody that's gotta go empty it. And we know that you can't just place it anywhere, because there's gotta be certain things done to put a trashcan somewhere by certain means. But we noticed that there's constant places where you find the most garbage, and we were trying... What we're trying to do is bring it to your attention, so that way, the problem's being acknowledged. But if you guys were able to put garbage cans, the best kind of places to be for everyone, where the most garbage, where the garbage flow is more... Yeah, consistent. Like, we have a big school community, and they all like to try to clean up and stuff for the most part. And we've done many cleanups throughout the years around, but it's the same thing over and over. It's just built up. So around the paramedic station there, the ambulance bay, is when most of the time you're done, unless you have, like, a bottled drink. And then down, like I said, to the Mariner Center, is when you get your most, like, garbage candy bar wrappers and that kind of stuff. So we... Yeah, that's basically what that slideshow was about.
It also, like, down here is also where Redo's is. And there is a ditch along here, especially, that doesn't get as too much care. And I'd... How many people would you say would go to Redo's every day? Quite a few.
Yeah.
Because it's right next to the school, right? So somewhere around, maybe by the intersection, would be an ideal spot. And maybe somewhere along the road would be a...
The reasoning we've kind of picked these locations is because it's where the sidewalks open up, and it'd be very convenient for people to access.
Okay, so this is moving into the other part. And sadly, most of the other people that did this part of the project were not able to be here today, but we are going to do our best to try to sum it up the best we can. So basically, the idea is, they made informational posters to put around elementary schools and just around public areas where people could see them and think about, like, litter and just environmental problems in general. And then we decided that the best thing would be to take our idea to put in garbage cans and take their posters and put them on the garbage cans. That way, the garbage cans are there, and they stand out. And we also believe that if they already have some kind of expression to them, that it would discourage any kind of vandalism or anything like that, and keep them more appealing.
So all... Well, I'm not sure if all, but a lot of these posters were drawn by somebody from each person in the group. So they're... Most of them, if not all of them, are like... Yeah, unique. So, yeah, this kind of was... It was two groups that, after we presented to the school and that kind, merged into one. And, yeah, they weren't able to make it, so we are trying to describe this as we can. But we figured if the trashcans could have this stuff, it's also kind of informal, maybe some of it, to whoever's using it. And you get a lot of graffiti on trashcans and stuff, so with this stuff, it might be harder to graffiti it, or it might... Where it's unique and somebody else's that they might go to school with, they might not... They might think twice before they graffiti it.
Yeah, that's what you just said. Yeah, so basically, I'll sum it up. Three trashcans would be ideal along the route from the high school to the Petrocanada. Somewhere along that Haley Road. Accessible, like you were saying, would be important things to factor. And adding some kind of piece of art, like Morgan said, might make people think twice before they wanna kick it in a ditch or spray paint it, whatever they do. So, anything else?
Thank you guys for your time, though, to present. We know it's kind of a costly thing to put three trashcans and then have this stuff on them, so we understand that. But we knew that we'd seen this garbage, and it would be better to bring it to you guys, because with the cat and all of the tourists coming in, it would look kind of better and cleaner to have those trashcans instead of it blowing around. And the businesses and the community would be a lot happier with the school and the kids. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we've got a couple questions here. I'll have a couple questions. That was great. That was great. We really appreciate you coming in and putting that in front of us. So we're gonna go to councillor Lesser first.
Hi, and thank you for coming. I worked at Yarmouth High for most of my career, except for the last three, and I think, I'm pretty sure I'm going back there next year. So looking forward to seeing you guys at the school and hopefully helping with some of your projects that you're doing. It was a really good presentation, and I know, sitting on that side at your age, you might question, did it go over well or was I nervous? You didn't appear nervous at all. Just so you know, it was a very good presentation. You also, I think, are on a day off. I just made some notes here. I think you're on a day off with marking, so you gave up a day to come in as well, which is wonderful. Thank you. And it's exciting that youth are actually getting involved in this and taking this project on. And I think youth will respect other youth by doing that, the same as the posters. If, you know, I think the poster idea of having something that another high school student has made and put on there will get more respect than, you know, the typical receptacle, you know, pictures of, that are on garbage cans, I guess. I don't think people look at those anymore, but I think people would be interested in those. And I think one thing that came up when I was at the high school is, we did have people coming to the school complaining about garbage around the building. And we went on the video cameras, and we found the back, the back of the building where our garbage, large garbage cans are, that Duffis or whoever picks up, seagulls can get it, at the time, could get into that. And we were watching them come in and sweep up bags of garbage and haul it and spread it everywhere. So students were getting the bad rap for that, and it was hard to tell the public, it's not our students that are making all the mess, because there's 800 students. And typically, people think that's what kids do, they're gonna throw garbage around. But it's impressive this year, the amount of times I've gone by the high school and seen, you know, different projects going on. And I think there's another group in the high school as well that maybe is doing some cleanup. But it's impressive to see students actually taking this project on. So I wanted to thank you for that. And I don't really have any comments about putting the receptacles there. I think that will come up after. But I just wanted to say thank you for doing it, and it was a good presentation.
Thank you.
Councillor?
Thank you. It was a wonderful presentation. I happen to be the chair of Communities in Bloom for the town, so it's very interesting for me to hear you first say that. I have actually been in those ditches on Haley Road, picking up garbage, you know, eight, nine bags at a time sometimes along that route, and especially by the Redo's pizza place. I know exactly what you're talking about, because I've been in those ditches. And they are issues. And I think probably about two years ago, I think we asked our Public Works to do an assessment of the garbage cans and locations around the town, and that was done. But I'm thinking it was probably prior to us having our new trail inactive walking trails in place, and it might be a timely time for us to actually relook at that, because we do have some new areas that, you know, particularly students and seniors from the housing development out there are using. So I think, you know, your words to us are wise words and timely. So I think we'll probably have to look at what you said, so thank you.
Okay. I agree. I mean, it was a great presentation. You were very professional. So, good on you. You knew your stuff. I always say, man, I'd love to meet you halfway, because I still can't believe in 2023 that you have to do a project on why people shouldn't litter. That's really, really sad. But it's great that you would pick it up and put it on the front burner again. So, I mean, we can certainly, we don't make any decisions here today, obviously. That's not how this works. But we'll certainly have that discussion. I love the idea of the posters, and I 100% agree that when you do the posters and you own them, that there's a whole lot more respect for the fact that, you know what, your own friends and peers did that, and so there's less chance of vandalism. And out of this side of my head, I say, I can't believe somebody just vandalizes. They're expensive. And I also... Sorry. I agree with you 1,000%. I just can't wrap my head around the fact that we actually need a garbage can across the street from the school, because people can't walk across the street with their garbage. Like, that's pitiful. That's really, really sad. And you saw that, and you're trying to do something about it. So we'll talk about this at another meeting. We will do that, and let you know how that works out. You'll probably be keeping track, or your teachers will be keeping track. Yeah, so thanks again for coming in. It was excellent. We appreciate what you've done.
And don't stop. And don't stop. Like, don't stop picking up litter, and don't stop looking at the environment and what you can do for it, because it's what we all need to do.
Get the mayor a picture of somebody littering. Get tagged with a nice little fine, which I wish we had videos everywhere, because that's all it would take. Somebody got... I was in line at Subway, and there was, I mean, it was a bunch of high school, I know they were high school students, because I knew a couple of, in a car in front of me, and they... The girl in the front seat took the order, and the girl in the backseat opened up the door and threw all her trash on the ground. I'm like, what? And I couldn't grab my phone fast enough to say, what did you just... I was in shock. I was in shock. But they think this is okay, and then it's not. But anyway, so thanks for coming in. Okay, staff report. So the CAO doesn't have a staff report. He probably didn't do anything this month. You know what? This is my only opportunity to say that. And there's a barrier, so he can't even kick me under the table. So, any questions for the CAO? You know where to find him, or if you have anything?
Your worship.
Yes, sir.
If I may retort.
No, you may not.
There were a few things done this month, but I have to confess my inadequacy when it comes to using our council management system. So what usually happens at this time of the month is I ask Lindsay to generate my report. And so what she has to do is take, go into the system and collect the tasks that I work on or assigned to me, export a data set into an Excel spreadsheet and make it look good. And as you know, Lindsay isn't with us this week, and I didn't get her to do it before she went away. So, anyway, I want to give Lindsay a shout out. Lindsay is getting married this weekend, and she's in Cape Breton this week, obviously, in preparation for that. So if you'll excuse me for my inadequacies, and I'll have a double report for you next month.
So the whole point being that we know you are never without. We know how full that schedule is. Fire department, our chief isn't here, but if there are any questions, we can find him. Operations and CHED. It's a really busy time of year, and it's really difficult for staff to come in and because things pop up. So it's not because anybody didn't want to be here, but it's just a really difficult time of year to do that. I have some questions, though. Maybe the CAO can...
We'll see.
Give it a go?
We'll see.
We'll see. The mall paving. We don't do, that's not our responsibility. It's like somebody's saying, can we, you know, pave my driveway? It's the mall property. How do we, is there a way we can go about that? I mean, there's, go about requesting it as a safety issue, or is that completely off of the... I mean, there's some deep holes there, and I don't know.
Yeah, so we do actually have a bit of a part. If you're speaking specifically about the mall...
Both, both of them. The one with the Dollar Store and...
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think that one's even worse.
Right, I don't think of that as a mall, but that's my bad. So we have relationships with both of those developments. You know, as you know, our transit bus does drive through both of those properties, and so we experience the... When things aren't smooth, we experience that. And I'm sure that we can express or communicate that. I suspect it's not something they don't hear from their customers and don't already know about. I do notice there's an extensive job happening at Walmart as we speak around repaving and, you know, we can pass the message along, your worship. We don't have the authority...
No, I know.
...to compel them to do a repaving. That's a very expensive job and takes a lot of lead time, sure. And I do notice that there's at least one entrance that goes off of Star Rose, Stars Road, to one of those very busy developments, that there is routinely potholes popping up, and there's routinely efforts made by the owners to patch them. But the patches don't seem to stand the test of time, given the traffic volume. So it's an ongoing battle for them, as it is for us, on some streets, and eventually there comes a time when you gotta kind of tear it up and start fresh. And as I say, we can communicate, but we can't compel them to redo it. And, uh, as I say, we can communicate, but we can't, uh, compel them to, to redo it.
Okay. Um, do you need a motion to communicate? Okay. All right. Um, I got a bunch of questions, but I'm going to go see who.
Yeah. Uh, so just to clarify, staff can make the communicate, can have communication with the, with the property managers and whatnot. But if council felt that they wanted under, under council signature to send a letter, then that, that would require a motion. So when council wants something, you know, if they, if they, if you want to put it on the record and in a document under your signature with council's endorsement, then a motion would be appropriate.
What do we want to do? Do we want to let, let staff just take a stab at it first? Let's, let's do that. Take a stab at it and then, um, Counselor Lesser.
So along the same lines, um, I have noticed a few properties, um, not, I don't want to name them, but of businesses that the grass is growing up extremely high. Um, and I know we don't have any authority, I guess, to, to do anything unless it gets unsightly and then we could, you know, possibly have it mowed and charged. Um, but I think, you know, in all these cases, the mall, uh, any of these spots, they operate a service that we need. And I think any kind of positive relationships we can have with them to, you know, encourage that to be fixed. Um, so I don't want to bring up any specific places, but I am wondering if there are some that come up, uh, what the, what the protocol would be if I, to report that we're noticing a lot of unmowed or unkept property for a business.
Go ahead.
Yep. So that's, uh, that's handled through the, um, Planning and Development Office. Our Bible Enforcement Officer works in that department. Uh, and I can tell you, because I'm copied on all of the letters that go out to property owners around either dangerous unsightly or, or unkept properties. Uh, there are a number of them and, and she's on it. Uh, but if you have noticed specific ones that, that maybe, uh, you're not sure they're on her radar, uh, an email to, to our enforcement officer would be, would be fine.
Okay. Um, another thing I, I know it's not really on here, but we, I think we discussed it when this council first, um, came in. And I don't remember the answer, but I, I was talking to a citizen, actually today, earlier today, um, about, and I, I know we talked about it and I don't remember the answer, so I wanted to ask, um, about putting a rainbow, uh, crosswalk in. And I remember at the time, there was something about, um, not being able to paint streets with a distraction or something. But I, I know in talking to this person who's involved with the Pride Association that, um, that there are other communities. I know Bridgewater, a few places are putting them in. I'm just wondering, I said I would bring it to, to the attention, but I know it's not, it's kind of a new item that I didn't ask to be put on the agenda. So, um, I don't know if that's.
I think I have a couple of those too, just to ask Chad, but they're going to end up as new.
I guess I'm just looking for some, some feedback, at least to be able to give to her as to why it might not have happened up to this point. I, I do remember having this discussion, but I don't remember the answer. Um, and if it's possible that where other communities are doing, if it's something we can do. Um, and the other part she brought up, which doesn't really fit into operational services, um, we're not flying the Pride flag for June. And I know we've had other flags that have flown it. I don't know if anybody's asked, but, um, they specifically asked if during Pride, during the Pride Parade, if we might be able to fly the, the flag on that day, that it happens. But I think, I just, I'm looking for my own, to be able to answer this person back. They just make a request to the mayor. Is that how?
Yeah. So, so no one asked for the Pride flag to be flown. It's being flown in the municipality. So that's, you know, covers partially, um, because I don't think it's ever been flown out there.
Right.
Um, Jeff can answer the part about the crosswalk. I mean, we have Pride benches, we have, you know, we've, we've got all of those things. So, um, you want to go ahead and do?
Yeah. So, so your worship, that, that did come up and it was referred to the Traffic Authority because when you, um, you know, the idea of, of, uh, changing the, the look of a crosswalk, uh, that is there as a, as a, you know, basically a public safety feature, um, that has to go through Traffic Authority. And the recommendation that came back was that, uh, council not, uh, do a Pride crosswalk or a multi-colored, uh, crosswalk. And the reason being it is that it doesn't comply with the, with the standards for crosswalk markings and that by, by adopting something that is, that is different and, and someone might argue unrecognizable as a crosswalk, uh, it, it could open the town to, to some exposure or liability should there be an accident. I, I think the argument is, is a bit far-fetched frankly, but that doesn't mean someone won't try it and it doesn't mean it wouldn't cost money. So what, uh, our Parks Department came up with, uh, you recall, uh, several years ago when this did come up, is they, they, uh, came up with a Pride bench and it was placed directly in front of Town Hall and in, in the rainbow colors and, uh, given, given a very prominent location. That bench has been upgraded to a more durable, uh, version that is in front of Frost Park and is to, to signal to the community, uh, that, uh, that we recognize, uh, the importance of, of, uh, being inclusive of, of everyone. And it's there for people to, for members of the public to enjoy and to see, uh, on our main street. So, um, I would suggest that the answer from staff won't change when it comes to a Pride crosswalk. It doesn't mean in any way that, that staff or, or in this case, council is not supportive. It just means that we found another way to signal to the community our values.
Sorry, I, I shut my mic off. I just wanted, I wanted to say thank you for that. Um, I knew, I knew there was an answer and I thought later tonight, if I didn't get the answer, I could go back and, and look online to see what the answer was. But I did want to get back to them and I knew it was, you know, I explained there's, everybody on council is very, um, inclusive and that had nothing to do with that, but I knew there were some safety issues. Um, and I apologize once again that I kind of threw it in there without making it, uh, putting it on the agenda ahead of time, but it was just a couple of things that kind of fit into operations that I thought, um, I could get answers to. So, thank you.
So with, no, with regard to the Pride Parade, are they, they're doing a parade? Okay. And then they have the festival kind of up in, I know because I shouldn't there. Yes, I always forget the parrot. So that, can we make note to have the flag flown that day? Okay? Fly the flag that day?
Thank you.
Good? Um, okay. So Counselor Bell. Oh, Mike, you might have to work the cameras there because the things are out of order.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I just want to go back to, uh, Chad's report. Uh, I know he's not here, uh, but I noted that the tender closed for the transit buses on June the 22nd. And obviously, uh, Chad and, and the staff haven't had an opportunity to review them. But I wondered if you were aware of how enthusiastically the tender invitation was taken up? Did we, did we get any tenders?
Uh, I don't have any, any information on that. I would be shocked if we didn't receive any bids. Uh, what I tell staff on, on issues like tenders is this is committee of the whole and I prefer they not bring tenders here, but rather put them on the full council agenda where decisions can be made. Um, you know, many times we've done special council meetings afterwards to ratify tenders and those are perhaps, uh, time sensitive, um, more time sensitive, but, um, I don't have any information. I can find that, circulate a, an email to council.
Professional interest. I mean, I'm just, we're, we're just, I think on the Transit Committee, we're really anxious to, um, to get, to get the ball, the, the tires rolling on the ground. So, uh, thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Counselor Heather.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I don't think this is on Chad's re- report, but, um, I did notice that they had a, a traffic counter on Prescott Street, uh, yesterday when I was up there, uh, uh, picking up garbage. And, um, speaking to some of the, the residents, they said that they had, um, um, requested that or spoke to Chad, um, that there was increased traffic on, on, on the street, um, as of late, um, perhaps because of other businesses in that location that has caused some more traffic. Um, and so they, they did put a traffic, uh, counter in there, which was great. But the other concern that, that was brought up at the time was it's right on Beacon Park. Um, and there are signage, there is signage, uh, one on Beacon, one on Prescott and I think one on Brunswick Street, but they're quite small, kind of high and older. It's for children playing kind of thing. So I guess my question was, is how long have they been there? Is there anything bigger, more modern? Um, it's a big, long stretch of park and there's only just that one like little sign and it can easily get missed and there's no fencing on that park and children running around. And just wondering if maybe Chad, they could look at just what is out there and is, is there something bigger and better and safer for the children? That was all.
So can we?
Why don't we, because Chad isn't here.
Yes.
And that's a request to do some work. Uh, why don't we just make a motion on that to, to request the review of the signage around the park?
Okay. I'll make that motion then.
Okay. So the motion is, is to request a review of the signage on, uh, park signage on, on Beacon Park. Okay? Uh, seconded. Okay? Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Contrary? Motion carried. Um, same, same thing here. I just had, uh.
Chad is here.
I know. Wrote a whole list for Chad. Um, dog poop signs. I don't know how else, I don't know how, I don't know. If you can't pick up your dog's stuff, then kindly give your dog to somebody else. Can we put a sign that says that?
That was rhetorical.
Wasn't rhetorical, but yes, it was rhetorical. Can, can we, can we have a couple of dog signs up around that just remind people? How much is it? $250?
I.
Something like that. I, I mean, I don't know what you folks think. I, I just think we should have a dog catcher grabbing the dog when your dog poops and you don't pick it up. I mean.
Pick it up with a bag and drops it.
Exactly. I mean, do you change your child's diapers? So, well, I mean, really, I don't even know what to say. Just can't even believe that it happens. Um, I would like, um, I would like a motion that would have staff look into putting up signage around not allowing, around picking up your dogs' stuff. And the fine that comes with, but can we do some fun signs?
Fun signs? Poop emojis?
Poop emojis. We'll just look into that. Can I have a mo, can, does anybody want to make that motion? Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll make the motion and, uh, and on that note about fun signs, I wonder if this one wouldn't be more properly directed to Mr. Carter, who has a real wit. And, uh, I think would be, would be a lot, be able to come up with some wording that would be inoffensive.
Okay?
Yeah.
So we'll refer it to staff and then we'll work our magic. Okay. So motion made. Who wants to second it? Thank you. Counselor Cleveland. Okay. Any discussion on this one? I don't, you know, sorry. Irresponsible people cost us a lot of money. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead. You gonna say something there, deputy?
I wasn't, but I can. Um, I, there is, uh, actually some kind type of setup where you can get, um, bags at, um, Elmer Square. Um, it's right there, right beside a receptacle. Sometimes when I walk my dog, it's, it's a nice little spot to, uh, if you forgot a bag yourself. I usually don't, but if you did, it's there. So I'm wondering if we could look into maybe, uh, putting, uh, a few more of those around and just to have the bags to encourage people to actually use it and pick it up if they didn't bring their own.
So the, does the bag care? Because we have one, um, you know, on the corner there. What's that?
At the trail.
At the trail. Yeah. We have one on the trail on Chestnut Street. We also have one on the trail that cuts across that corner on Main Street where the old fire station used to be. We've got that. Um, and that's a garbage can as well. Like that's a, you can put your gar, waste in there as well. So do we need a couple more? I mean, we can, then let's do a, go ahead, Counselor Bell.
Um, we've been talking about the act of trails.
Yes.
Um, and garbage collection. And, uh, I think that it would be beneficial perhaps, uh, around the Broadbrook Trail. There are a lot of, the dog park is there. There's a lot of, you know, and there's garbage receptables, receptacles there as well. So maybe at one end or the other end of the Broadbrook Trail, it might be helpful.
Okay. All right.
I've got lots of ideas.
Yeah, good. Okay.
I do. So we're. We can add the bag dispensers.
And bag dispensers. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Amasada. Motion carried. Thank you. And then the other one, I mean, you're really wishing Chad was here today. The ashtrays, ashtrays on the sidewalk. I mean, you can argue with me on this one because it's, I'm neither here nor there, but, um, the one thing that you have to pick up every day are cigarette butts because for some reason, um, folks don't think of them, of cigarette butts as litter and it is every bit litter. Um, do we need a couple of those downtown? I don't know. I, it, it, it's seriously like, it's just, you know, it's awful.
I don't think it's a bad idea to have them there. I do believe that nobody's going to use them. Because I've seen this and I, I bet you that, uh, Counselor Dairs can kind of agree with this one because, uh, with my many years at, uh, hanging out at the Mariner Center, you can, they do have setups where you put your, uh, your butts and you can tell where they are by all the cigarette butts that are around them, uh, because nobody puts them in there. But it's, and it's frustrating, but having them there says that we at least made an attempt to do it. And for some that are conscientious, perhaps it will help. It's all I got. Sorry.
Go ahead. I, I have a, uh, go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
Oh, sorry. I think, uh, yeah, during the, the fires, I think people were so ashamed of throwing butts out the window and I was hoping that maybe that might transfer, keep going along and people would, you know, realize that there is a place to put them. Um, but I agree, they probably won't be used, but I think it's a proactive thing to have them there at least. And then, you know, at least the education piece can come around, um, you know, through social media or whatever to, you know, that there's a, there's a reason that they're there. Um, I mean, it's the same as garbage. We have garbage cans that don't get used sometimes, but I think, I think it's proactive to have, to have a place to put the cigarette butts.
Okay. Counselor Heather.
Um, the garden club in, um, Brown Street Garden has one or two, um, kind of homemade, um, uh, cigarette butt, um, thing there. Little, the cans are on a, on a metal stick and they're painted pretty to, you know, attract attention and they're kind of on the corner, um, sitting in the garden so that people can, can use them. And I don't think they get used, but, um, there, there is a option there for, for butts at this point.
Okay. All right. So is that, does anybody want to make a motion to have staff look into adding a couple in the downtown? Okay. Counselor Lesser? Seconder? Counselor Bell? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Sorry. I, I know I sound, uh, anyway, just costs money for, um, all right. And here's the last question. No, I have two. Um, are the garbage cans downtown, they're not solid? Does that matter? Just get complaints that the galls get into them because they're not solid. And I don't know if that's true or not true or, or.
Mr.?
So do we need solid garbage cans?
I can take that question to Chad.
Okay.
Because he would have a better idea of what the frequency is of, uh, issues arising from the fact that they're not solid.
Perfect. And then, um, how do we get extra spaces at the marina? People to park their boats?
Build a bigger marina.
We're gonna need a bigger marina.
We're gonna need a bigger marina. Uh, it, you know, it, so your worship, that's a great question and I think it's one that, uh, you know, we are going to have a waterfront advisory committee and I think we're going to talk about a lot of things, but one of the things that we should talk about is the fact that the marina is very busy and, uh, there is not room in the inn. And that's a good thing. Uh, it's a good thing from the perspective of those that, that were part of creating the marina in the first place and hoping that it would be so full. Now it's time that we have to start thinking about, do we want to expand that service to, and I'm hearing you asking the question, so I'm assuming you're being asked the question. So that's perhaps for the waterfront advisory committee to discuss.
Fair enough. That's next week. That's awesome. Okay. Any more, any more for Chad? And Jeff? Good. Okay. Um, planning and economic development, and I see Natalie here. Any questions for Natalie? Go ahead, Derek.
Um, try not to make it as long as Chad's list. Uh, actually, I don't, I don't want to ask really a question more than just saying that, uh, the murals are looking incredible around town. And I think it's, I think like talking to people that have come into the community, um, and them trying to go around and see where they all are and find them is, is unique. Um, I did see that she's doing one, I think, at the airport as well, inside, um, which is, is nice because that maybe mean that more people can start going to the airport and be used. Um, but the mural program is incredible. Um, as far as the facade program, there's one business I'm thinking of in particular, like I said, I'm not mentioning names, that they've recently opened and it's a fantastic location and it's really nice inside. Um, is, when, when people are buying buildings that aren't in the best shape, do we, do we ever go to them and say, this is available? Or is it up to them to come to the facade program?
Uh, is facade? Yes, it is. Um, so in both situations. So when a downtown commercial property owner, new property owner comes to town, um, and they come in for a permit of any type or they're just asking questions in site selection, I always provide them with, uh, information on facade, murals, signage, uh, small business accessibility, also introductions to our different business development organizations. So they, they get that and then we loop around again when they come in and they're doing a signage, uh, for signage permit. So wherever we can, uh, we try to do that, do that outreach.
Okay. Um, Western Impact Regional Meeting, what's that?
Um, so, uh, during COVID, the Western Run, uh, created a, uh, group. Uh, so it's an informal group where all the economic development, uh, personnel around the region and other stakeholders, um, Nova Scotia Works and SBI or, uh, their new name. We'd get together and we'd have an agenda and we would chat about economic development activity. And so they just renamed that group for post-COVID. That's the post-COVID name. And so we, uh, meet virtually, um, once a month and we talk about different economic development items.
Thank you. Okay. Um, lawns.
Yes.
We, we have an issue with lawns. I'm going to say two things. Number one, um, Jade's not here, but we know she's gone great guns. Like, we know she's just, um, she's doing a lot. So thank you for that. You can thank her.
Yep.
Her most. The, the process for that, that it gets, we ask and then it gets posted and then how long before we can go in MOW?
Uh, so once we identify the situation, so it could be by, uh, her routine drive around, which she has scheduled to do that, or it can be by report a problem complaint. I always suggest do the report a problem on our, see click fix on our website because it gives us the ability to track versus sometimes emails can get lost. Um, so it's either report a problem or drive by or we get a complaint from another means. Um, we go back and take a look at our bylaw because there's a certain height of grass, uh, that we will respond to and sometimes the height of the grass might be an indication of other things that may be happening at the property. So number one is always to do an investigation, uh, contact the owner if we can with a simple phone call saying, hey, we recognize this situation, um, this is our bylaw, we need you to remedy it. If we can't find or locate the property owner and we only look at the property owner, we don't necessarily have information around the tenant and so we are always speaking with either the property manager or the property owner, not the tenant. Um, we will issue a letter. So we'll issue a letter and we give them seven days to respond. If we continually don't get a response within a reasonable time, maybe day number eight, nine, or 10, uh, depending on the severity, then we will go in and get it mowed. Again, it depends on the severity of the situation. Um, and that's basically, it goes on there, uh, as a lien on their taxes.
Okay. Okay. So a couple, were you saying a couple of weeks? Like it's not a month of no mowing?
No, not, generally not a month. And again, it, it depends on the situation, but generally we, especially during now that we're in summer months and we also communicate with our fire inspector. So this is sometimes not really about the aesthetics of, or the curb appeal. This is around public safety and fire. So, uh, tall grass leads to potential dangerous situations, especially if we're in drought for fire. Uh, it also can promote, um, dangerous conditions if the grass is growing near the property, meaning that it can, it can start to affect the building, uh, decks, stairs, uh, undergrowth. It's also helps with the pervasiveness of rodents. So it's not just about tall grass. It's about fire, it's about rodents, it's also about building safety. Uh, so this is why we try to get at these as quickly as we can.
Okay. Uh, and then see, click, fix, because when people call, I just say you can go to see, click, fix. And they can do that anonymously.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That's folks, folks ask that.
We just, we just ask your worship that, um, anonymous is not a problem, but if they can provide details, so having general information doesn't help us with what's the near, what's the civic address or the, in front of what civic address? Or just give us more identifiers because it's very difficult unless it's very obvious to kind of pinpoint, uh, where some of the, the situations are.
And do we contract this out? I know we had a gentleman that used to do that.
Yes, we contract.
Do we have enough of those people on contract?
Uh, yes, we did, uh, we did some work last year. So we, we outsourced for trash, we outsourced for mowing.
Any, any more questions for? Okay. Yes, we're good. Thank you. Great. Um, planning, engineering, and DiMario is here. Any questions for DiMario? Date on Vancouver Street though? Yay. You can tell us that. Fill us in.
We have a new hire I just wanted to introduce to you, Council Darshini. Uh, she started with us in, uh, late March. Uh, she's been very busy. She's already put out four grants and she's working on another three. Uh, so I'll just let her say hello right quickly.
Hello. Thrilled to be here. I hope you don't have any questions for me.
No, but you know what? We love our staff, but you're one of our favorites. You give money to our staff. That works. That works. Welcome.
Thank you.
I know you're, you're settling in well and, and enjoying it, so we're just, we're really glad you're here.
I really am. Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Good stuff. So questions for DiMario? Vancouver Street? We're starting, what are we doing?
Yeah. So, uh, we, we've extended the tender to, the tender closing to July 11th. Uh, so we'll know more at that time. Uh, we had to put out a few more addendums. I mean, rightly so, there's a, there's a couple of questions there that had to be asked by, uh, contractors, so.
Okay. Um, go ahead, Counselor.
Uh, just on that, I guess to put any rumors to rest, um, the horse remains in the middle of the, um, like where the horse is, the horse will go back in that same spot? Just thought, I don't know if you...
There's a re-intent as far as I'm concerned to, uh, keep the horse safe during construction. So if that requires removing it temporarily...
Sorry, yes, removing it during the job, but, but eventually it's not going to get relocated somewhere.
I, I've never heard that consideration.
Okay. And then the, the garden that normally is there following after the concrete, um, spot where, where, said the last meeting where David Sallos is in the middle of the night sometimes planting flowers, will that, will that end up going back in some kind of a flowerbed in that area? Do you know?
Uh, we're not sure what the exact impacts would be in regards to that particular area until we do construction phasing, uh, but our intent is always to reinstate as is.
So if, if that horse has to come up and there's a way to, um, make the fountain work, that would be so awesome. It would also be very expensive. I'm just saying.
I feel that's a Jeff and Jerry question.
No, actually, you're sitting in front of the right people. We just have to convince them.
Wait for this.
Oh, that would be so cool. Um, the Haley Road Phase Eight, what's, what is it exactly?
Uh, so that's just a stretch between Jody Shelley and, uh, Haley Road on Parade. It's going to be just your typical multi-use trail. So right now we're just waiting to see what the weather's doing so we can get a start date, a firm start date. But I mean, a week of rain kind of throws people off.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Bell.
Oh, I, yes, your worship, I just wanted to go, just cycle back to the horse fountain just to make an observation that, um, the horse fountain is very fragile. It is, um, held together in part by pieces. It's, it's been damaged before and replaced and repaired. Um, so, you know, it, it is a, it's...
Better leave it.
It's fragile.
I remove my request to look into trying to get water to run out of it.
Thank you.
That's three. That's Jeff and Jerry and DiMario saying thank you. Okay. Um, and the, the only other thing was the, the grant for low-carbon communities. And my question was like, what's low-carbon about us? Do you have to fill in like what makes us low-carbon or is it something that encourages low-carbon?
Um, I don't know if I'm at liberty to share this yet, but it, it's...
Then don't.
It's, uh, uh, we're looking into like plans to retrofit. That's, that's, we're, we're trying to get to the low-carbon goal.
Okay.
Is my assumption, so...
And, yeah, and that answers.
Awesome.
Yeah, go ahead.
So your worship, uh, that's a great segue and, and thank you Darsh. So in 2021, council adopted a, a, a goal for, uh, greenhouse gas remit, uh, reductions by 2030, to go, I believe it's 20% below 2016. Okay, we have that goal. Now we're, we're back together and we're getting back to business as usual. Uh, we're going to be activating an in-house staff committee that will work with Darsh and DiMario and, and all of our, our managers and directors to figure out exactly how we're going to do that. That will require some studies, uh, to look at feasibility of, of certain retrofits or, or initiatives that, that could help get us there. And some of them we won't actually follow through on because they're good ideas, but they don't, maybe aren't, aren't feasible or don't get us where we need to go. So the work is, the work is beginning on that and part of what, uh, what Darsh is talking about is applying for, for money to, to assist us with some of that study work. So I just want to remind you of the goal and the short timeframe that we have to, to reach it. So we will have, sorry, your worship, I've just finished. We will have to be investing time and treasure into achieving that goal. It won't just happen on its own. It will have to be intentional.
I think I remember that. You did a presentation on that?
Yes.
With tho, with those numbers and I remember that now. It's hard when you, when you're looking at applying for grants, like the, is it because we're so far or is it because we're seeking to be further? Right? So that's, that helps. So thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Go ahead.
Just to clarify, Jeff, you said, um, the, the policy was set to, or the aim was to get to what by 2030? Was it 20%?
Uh, 20% below 2016 levels. And so, uh, DiMario's worked, the work with the consultants that he oversaw, uh, we were able to quantify 2016. And, and so the goal is to get 20% below that...
By 2030.
Identified target.
Okay. Yeah.
You have a pattern?
Seven years. Six and a half. Six and a half years. We can multiply that out in months. Any more questions for Darsh and Mario? Good. Thanks very much.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you.
Finance department. Any questions for Jerry? Are you sitting back there having a panic a couple times, Jerry?
Yeah, all those Stenber and Puff receptacles, yeah, which can...
Fifteen thousand, just like that. It's like having cash in the purse.
Well, I just wondering why you automatically thought Mike might be the only creative mind around for parking signs, but other than that? So, no, as far as finance, I think from the report, you can see we kind of just switched from budgets to audits and a lot of business as usual, then summertime is vacations and all that kind of stuff. So lots going on still. Next week, I think you're all aware, the final debt payment being made. So that's right around the corner.
I hope there's a cake.
Sure there will be.
We're gonna need it. We're gonna need a cake. Celebrate. We're gonna have a party before we borrow again. Thanks, Jerry. Any questions for Jerry? Go ahead, uh, Counselor Lesser.
It seems like I have a little something for everybody, but, um, there we, the piece that we put out, or I guess Mike put out around paying the debt, um, was so like really exciting to be on the post. Uh, and like anything you post, you always get a few naysayers and people, um, the keyboard warriors, I guess, came out. And, uh, just to, just to go back to what I think the mayor said at the last council meeting, our taxes did stay the same because people started saying, my taxes went up. But the assessments went up, um, which are not directly involved with us, um, but the tax rate stayed the same, which, what we do have control of. So I know a few people said, well, my taxes did go up, so you're, you know, you're lying about what you're saying, but, uh, property values go up and therefore their total bill goes up, but, but the percentage that we're charging stays the same. So just once again to say it, if anybody is watching that, that we did not raise tax rates, so.
Yeah, I think when I looked at that, if I remember the numbers, around 67 or 68% of the residences' values assessments went up by the cap, which was set by the province, which is related to inflation. So I think that was 7.7% for cap. So right across the province, pretty much everybody went up 7.7. Another 24, 25% of our increases were because of, uh, construction and renovations or, uh, buildings or houses being sold. So when a house is sold, the cap is dropped and it's reset at the new purchasing price, right? So you get, uh, an increase in assessments through that process as well. So that amount are to about 85, 88%, somewhere in that range, if I have my numbers right, uh, why people's assessments increased. But again, yeah, you're right. I mean, the, uh, tax rate itself is one part of the equation for what people actually pay in dollars.
Counselor Bell?
I sound like a broken record.
No, this is good info.
So I'm going to say it again. Um, the amount that you pay for taxes has nothing to do with the tax rate. It has to do with the budget. And our budget went up last year. Um, assessments went up last year. So, and unless your assessment didn't go up last year, you're going to pay more taxes this year. And we, we really, we really need to be better at communicating the decoupling between tax rates and taxes because the two are not in sync with one another. It, you know, it really does come back to how much is the town of Yarmouth spending and what is our total assessment? That's it. That, you know, one gets divided into the other. And I mean, it's pretty simple because there's a lot of other factors that go into, you know, where we get our money. But it's just, you know, to say that tax rates stayed the same and not explain that that doesn't necessarily mean that your taxes are not going up this year is just deceptive. And so that's what ends up making people feel that we're not being truthful. And it's not that we're not being truthful, it's that people think if the tax rate is the same, that that means their taxes are going to be the same and the two are not connected. So we, I just think it's important to recognize that we experience the same inflationary pressures as a administrative unit that every individual going to a grocery store experienced in the last year or so. And the costs of doing business have gone up, our budget increased. We were we were fortunate in that our assessments also increased. And because our assessment has increased, we didn't have to raise our tax rate. But when your assessment increases, your taxes go up unless you drop your tax rate. And we didn't do that. We maintained a tax rate even though our assessment went up. And we did that because our cost of doing business was more. And, you know, somehow or another, we have to figure out, I think politically, how to frame that in a way that makes people understand what what it means. Anyway, that's my that's my broken record for the day. Thank you, Your Worship.
It's always good to hear it, though, because it's good to hear it. Okay, any more questions for Jerry? Good, thank you. Okay, Yarmouth Recreation, Frank's here. Any questions for, go ahead, Counselor?
Just to keep the role, like, make sure I get everybody. First of all, I want to say thank you to our staff because although you're getting some questions this time, you don't usually get a lot of questions because your reports are are usually really good. And we know the work that our staff does. I would love to be in Jeff's shoes and have a staff that work as hard as as you guys do. But I just wanted to, a couple of things on the report. Elvina and Mary for the provincial awards are two incredible people in our community that do a lot of work. And you see them everywhere. Just excited to see that, you know, they're receiving those awards. And the only other question I had, because I think I spoke on something online that I probably shouldn't have without knowing for sure, but the fireworks that happened on Canada Day, is that a is that a federal grant that comes? Okay, so I didn't misspeak because they, I know they're in some communities, they're looking at donating that money to the fire relief, which is not like, I don't think we can take federal money and just turn that back over. So I did comment on that when I saw people saying Yarmouth should be doing the same thing. And then they, you know, you also have people saying, I thought you had a firework ban, but the firework ban is, we have a bylaw that allows them on certain occasions. So I just wanted to make sure I was right, that federal grants come into play on that, so.
Yes, I saw that District of Clare decided to take what the funds that they put into their fireworks show and donate it to the the families from the Shelburne County fires. So with with us, we've applied for funding through Heritage Canada. We received $15,000 to do all of our Canada Day celebrations, of which the biggest expense is the fireworks show, which is $10,000. And then with all the rain and weather coming, we may be in one of those situations where we have everything set up and then we can't shoot the show because of the weather. And then anyway, we'll we'll deal with it, but we've, I've got my shoelace shoelaces to my eyes crossed, ready to go for Canada Day.
Okay. I have to ask this, gym time for the youth. So we can do it, and maybe this isn't under you, but we can do it in Shelburne County, we can do it in Digby County, but we can't do it in Yarmouth. So we have youth that need, as I say, need, they want and need access to the gym, basketball, for example. Like, how do we do that?
So we are, we are during school time, we do have community use of schools activities happening. I think you're referring to summer
I am.
Gym time. Okay. So we are breaking down some of those barriers. We are in the works, we're talking with Yarmouth High to allow us some access to Yarmouth High Gym. The issue always seems to be around custodial work, that the summertime is when the janitors are stripping floors and re-waxing and all that sort of thing. But we are making some headway with that. And Yarmouth High has been very receptive to some of our needs, some of the requests that we have. Does that mean that once we put someone in every Wednesday night in July, that come August, they may get pumped because of cleaning schedules? It could happen, but I guess right now with, we've been part of a regional community use of schools project for a year where we've been looking at our two busiest schools, Yarmouth Elementary and Meadowfields, and trying to do some things differently to try to make access to those facilities a bit better. We've had some provincial influence from our regional office with Anna Hanstra. And I think some of those things are making some some people scratch their heads and say, well, the gym is sitting here all summer in the dark. Why can't it be used?
Yeah.
So I think what happens in some cases, if the facilities department say, okay, we're going to open up these schools here during the summertime, some of the schools push back a bit because they may be run a little bit differently. Some other schools are more receptive. And I find that we have great principles that we work with, but they have a lot of demands on them. So I think it's it's a it's something that we're working towards. I think we will have some times, I don't think it'll be seven days a week, but we will have some times in some gyms this summer.
Okay. It's really, and I understand the demands, I understand that, and I and I respect it. It's really hard to say to our youth, you know, we understand what you, and I don't think, I don't think activity, whether it's basketball or swimming or anything else, I don't think it's just a want, I think it's a need. I think mentally, we all need to get out and do whatever suits us. I mean, I'm preaching to the choir, I know, Frank, but because you know this, it's what you do. But it's really difficult to to hear that the that they can't get into the schools that are, you know, it's it's really, it's really difficult.
It's been an issue for
For quite, for quite some time.
Thirty-something years, you know, that that it it seems like as soon as school closes, it's like, you know, mothballed and cleaning zone. And we do use Meadowfields and Maple Grove for for our summer program.
Yeah.
But we have some scheduling issues with cleaning schedules with when we're within those schools. But, you know, to me, the last, over the last year, we have made some some breakthroughs a bit, and I think I think things will be heading in a more positive direction. Will it be perfect? No. But I think we'll we'll have some opportunities where we can do some things a little differently. One of the things that we always do because of the way our community use of school agreements have been, is that if a group is coming into a school, we have to have a staff person there responsible to open and close the door. So sometimes that can be problematic in this day and age with trying to find a staff person that wants to work four shifts a week from five to eight o'clock at night. They may be working another job. What happens if they get sick? That sort of thing. So one of the things that we've pitched is that give us more security keys, and we sign them out to the group, and the group is responsible to come in, turn the lights out, make sure the doors are locked.
Yeah. And if you don't do that, you don't get the gym again. I mean, you have to be responsible, right?
So so we're 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 working probably, probably, we're at the highest level of having some two-way conversations, whereas before it was more, that's the way we always do it, we're not pushing it. You know, it's, I think, I think some things are changing.
Fair enough. Deputy, you had your little fingers up there?
Yep, just a heads up that council will be doing a breakfast at the Hope Center at nine AM on Canada Day. So shout out to Frank for coordinating, working together to get that done. And then a few of us will be there at the Southend Playground with the events going on there from 11 to three, I believe, a lot of great games. And I see a lot of great things playing there and again for the waterfront. And I see some things over at the Kefir Shoe. So just great to see Frank from Yarmouth Rec's point of view for Canada Day, all the great things going on and hope the weather cooperates for once and it works out.
Yeah, it looks like a great lineup.
That's the biggest thing is the weather. So and it's kind of, to me, over the last two days, it's kind, the forecast has improved slightly, so we'll
Yeah.
We should be able to get the activities off. The one that I'm most worrisome about is the fireworks just because of the fog and
And how many, that's happened to us before. So how many days do we have before we have to not return the money? But we can do them another night, but not, you can't go like a month away or something.
So that's that's the thing. We have to schedule back with Fireworks FX and their technicians. And the grant says that we, if we cannot shoot on July 1st, we have to try for July 2nd, July 3rd, July 4th. But if, a lot of times, the technicians are not available.
Exactly.
They're on other shoots that are scheduled because a lot of people are canceling Canada Day now and already setting theirs for forecast.
Okay.
So we're rolling the dice a little bit, so.
Okay. And then the rec committee, which, whatever, the rec committee. So suggestion, like, if somebody has a suggestion, whether they email or call or whatever, does that, like, everything should come to the committee? Is that how it's supposed to work? I don't know how it's supposed to work. If somebody had a suggestion about something, they would like to do something, does it go?
Goes through the chair of the committee.
Okay. And then what does the chair do? Send it out to the committee?
Or depending on what the situation is, it may go to a CAO, it may go to myself.
Okay. All right.
But I guess we're we're in that position where we're looking at that whole arrangement.
Yeah.
What makes sense, what doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
We're kind of in a position of flux.
Okay. Fair, fair enough. We're on status quo until, until, I don't know.
Yeah, so, Your Worship, I think there's, depending on the nature of a of a suggestion, I mean, they could go in an email to Frank, they could come in an email to you, it sounds like you may have received one, I don't know. But, you know, a suggestion can go in any direction, but it has to see the light of day.
Yeah.
And, you know, not every, not every idea is necessarily a good idea or a feasible idea. And that often is going to require staff to look at it. So in any case, suggestions should come back to Frank. And then, you know, Frank can communicate with the suggester or, you know, the citizen who whose idea, you know, he's considering and have a conversation. You know, I think that's that's kind of natural, and I would say it happens in more than just one department, that we get ideas from citizens. We don't necessarily report them into a report, and they all don't make it to Committee of the Whole, which stands, which is our standing committee for for exactly what we're doing here today, communicating with staff around the interests, concerns, and thoughts from council to staff back and forth.
Okay. I just, because I don't know the process, I don't know how it works. So so somebody wants pickleball out at the St. Ambrose, does that come to the committee? Like, what if, what if you don't want it or Jeff doesn't want it, but the committee says, you know what, when you add the community values in, if that's what the community's thinking, how do you, like, how does it come through the committee? Right? That's all.
Right.
Because I don't know process. Anyway, any, oh, look at this. Go ahead, Derek.
I guess I'm kind of been lonely for a little while, I'm trying to talk a lot tonight. When you brought up about not having staff, because I've seen a few things that had to cancel because of staff, which is not a problem everywhere, is there any opportunity that we might be able to tap into volunteers, like, maybe some senior groups or, and then maybe train them? I know my grandson's involved in, I don't know the name of it, but like model to become young leaders or whatever, and they're going to help out on Canada Day. But is there an opportunity maybe to train some seniors that might be interested in going to those schools, even as a backup if if we can?
There is more opportunity. I guess we do have a Yarmouth Seniors for Seniors group that works with us to help deliver some of the the things that they like to do, whether it's walks, whether it's dances and that sort of thing. So we kind of coordinate and take registration and then kind of let them run things. So there is more opportunity for that. We do have the LEED, which is an idea to try to get younger people excited about recreation, give them some training, get them some volunteer experiences, and hope that someday they'll apply to be a summer, a summer leader and and start their journey. But the seniors is one. When I was talking about having staff in the schools to open and supervise activities, some of our greatest staff are senior citizens that are retired or semi-retired, and they just like to be social and be out and about. And hey, they make, you know, a few bucks while they're doing it. And so that's one of the the things that we've been trying to tap more on is, instead of looking more for a younger student that's busy, that may be on three sports teams or has a busy social life and often can't take shifts, we're trying to find people that will take them on.
Awesome. Good stuff. Counselor Heather, did you have your light on? Okay.
I just a quick question. Summer program registrations, 167 summer program participants so far. So how much more room do we have in that? Is that filled or is there room in some of those for more folks?
The 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 Summer Fund Day Camp is always the one that fills. So the majority of those 167, I would guess that maybe 80 or 90 are ages four to seven. And then the Explore Sports Camp is the next range from eight to 11. And the harder ones to fill are the ones as they get older, the outdoor adventures and that and that sort of thing. So so there are, there are some days that are full, but I would say out of 38 program days, there's probably five that are completely full.
Still some more.
For sure, yeah.
Counselor Gil?
So as I sit here, I'm thinking that in years past, certainly before my time at this table, there was a fire protection committee and a public works committee, which no longer exists, probably for a good reason. Because, and I'm wondering, you know, with Frank sitting here reporting to us, why do we have a recreation committee?
Well, we don't need one.
So, Your Worship.
Go ahead, CAO.
So Worship, I don't mind responding to that because I've had the exact same thought. And, you know, as we enter discussions about renewing our 25-year-old recreation agreement, this is something that I think we need to talk about. You know, it has been probably 15 years since we've had finance, public works, you know, all these different committees, and we created this Committee of the Whole system. One of the benefits of Committee of the Whole is that you folks, all of you, are here and talking with all of our staff. And I think the relationship, the trust, the the interaction that happens here and outside of here as a result of familiarity and comfort is irreplaceable. You know, I can, I think back to my earliest days in in this role, my senior staff were very nervous to talk to counselors. It was, it was not a a line of communication that was encouraged between council and staff members. And frankly, there wasn't the level of familiarity and probably trust. I think this this model has changed that. I mean, the 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 folks around this table and the staff who work for the town, you know, they were always, always, you know, good people and always on the same page, but didn't get to talk, didn't get to interact, interact and understand some of the, some of the challenges or the answers to the questions you're asking because they didn't have the opportunity. So I think Committee of the Whole system has some, has some benefits besides governance efficiency, and and I think we're enjoying those benefits today. So I I will be asking us to consider So, I, I will be, um, asking us to consider, uh, going that extra step with, with recreation, uh, to incorporate this interaction as how we deal with things. So, so the mayor asked, what if a citizen has a suggestion? Well, you guys get suggestions from citizens all the time about all, all manner of things. Some of them were expressed here, here today to, to other directors. There's no reason we can't have a discussion with Frank about pickleball, right? And, and Frank is pretty knowledgeable about pickleball and, uh...
I still can't score.
I'm not surprised. I'm not, I didn't say skilled at it, I knowledgeable about it.
Can't be good at everything.
But this is an opportunity and, and so Frank, uh, says, you know what, uh, you know, pickleball is a fast-growing sport. It does have some differences to, to tennis, so it's a louder sport. And people, uh, in, in residential areas sometimes complain about, about the noise. But, since it is a fast-growing sport and popular and fits our demographic in our community, maybe we can look at a facility that is specifically located to mitigate against some of the complaints that we might expect to come forward from, from a poorly placed pickleball court. So, you know, we can have those discussions here. Frank can go away and do his work, come back, give you a budget estimate for, for the capital budget and away we go. We get things done. Uh, we don't need another committee. And I can tell you, uh, when it, when we talked about fire and the fire agreement, one of the things my, uh, my colleague in the municipality said to me was, you know, we don't do our, our citizens a service when we invite them to participate in committees that don't have a, a real need or, or a, a mandate in which they can, they can sink their teeth in and identify that they truly have a role. Um, and I'll contrast it to communities in Bloom. We have a very enthusiastic community around communities in Bloom because there's, there's a real role there for the members. And, and I would never, uh, suggest to you that we roll that into committee of the whole. Uh, but recreation, I think, is a different bird and I think it, it does lend itself well to that and I, and it will be something we talk about.
This is good. Like, this is the, this is the ability to just come in and chat and have a conversation. Like, and, and then the, the other piece is, I'll pick on Frank cause he's sitting in front of me, but it goes for every director that came forth. Like, they put the effort into the, into the report, it's up to us to make sure that we read it, which this council's really great at. Every council isn't, but this council's really great at that. And if there's questions and concerns, this is, this is where we do it. Like, it just makes it so much easier. Um, but yeah, so, we good? Any more questions for Frank? You good, deputy? Thumbs up. Okay. Thank you.
And, uh, thanks to the deputy mayor for all his, uh, chef experience with those sausages and, uh, with the barbecue. I've gotta, I've gotta get him a chef's hat.
Oh, my gosh. He'll do those sausages the night before and I'm like, there's like, how many sausages? It must be cooking for a week, but I know you just do them up.
Frank's sauce.
And Frank's sauce.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for that. Beech leaf, oh, we've got the strategic priority, so if there's any questions for Jeff on that? Yep, that's for information. Okay, beech leaf mining weevil, councillor Dairs. Go ahead.
So, yeah, this is a, this is an invasive, um, species that has sort of ravaged trees in Halifax in the past and, and I think probably last year was the first time it was detected in Yarmouth, but it's spreading very rapidly. Um, one of the things we should probably be most proud of is our tree inventory. I mean, we've won a national award through communities in Bloom for that very thing. And the, the beech trees in this community are quite, um, uh, they're old. I mean, they're, they're heritage trees, um, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't jeopardize their future by ignoring the, the fact that we've got this, this bug in the, in the area. Um, the one tree that I, I'll call to mind is the one, the copper beech in front of the old high school. And what a shame it would be to see that tree.
That's a beech?
That's a copper beech, yeah.
I thought that was a chestnut.
Copper beech. And there's so many others. Um, I'm sure that, uh, that Todd, uh, because National asked for his inventory program, they were so impressed with it. So, I'm sure he knows where all the beech trees are. Um, my recommendation is to council direct staff to investigate the issue of the beech leaf mining weevil and provide council recommendations to maintain the health for beech tree inventory.
Okay. Seconded. Seconded. Okay. Any discussion on this one? Go ahead, councillor Lassner.
Um, I think, I'm not sure if I'm correct in thinking this, but I don't know if it was councillor Bell that wrote it, but somebody wrote an article about the beech tree in front of the high school. I don't know if that was the article you wrote or for somebody else, but I, I remember it being in the, in the banker. Um, and it was a, it was a great article about the history of that tree and it's, it is a really unique tree. But I did see one on, um, please, uh, sorry, up at the high, uh, hospital on Vancouver Street, there's one that's getting pretty close to the same size, I think, in front of like the old Roy Andrews building. But those are, those are treasures and I think if we can do anything to make sure that they're not gonna be destroyed by this, um, invasion, that would be, that would be really good.
Okay. Did I have a seconded? I did. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. Uh, schedule a fees policy amendment to recommend that council amend the schedule of fees policy to waive development fees for established short-term rentals. Councillor Bell?
Uh, I would...
Oh, sorry. You're, you're on. For some reason. Oh, I didn't know if I had pressed your button. Go ahead, try again.
I just wanted to, uh... Make that a motion.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Go ahead.
Well, I got nothing to say then.
Confer it.
This is something I was really concerned about. Uh, I brought it up and asked that it be put here. Thank you all for supporting it.
Yeah, this is, this is a good one. So, so the, uh, they're already established. Does that mean by the date last Wednesday or two Wednesdays ago? Like, what is, what's the deadline for that? Because I understand there might be others that might be able, think they can hop on this.
Uh, your worship, I, I'm having technical difficulties here. I can't actually open the document, but I, my recollection is that there was a date suggested within it.
Do not read your stuff a week before.
Yeah.
Because...
So, if, if it's, if it's not there, your worship, um, the intent was for existing and so we can establish an effective date, um, you know, prior to the adoption of the policy. So, the, the, the date is, it could be the Ju- July council meeting where this would be considered. So, you could establish July first, uh...
So, that's what it says.
Okay.
Three hundred advertising fee? No. Waived? Is it the advertising fee?
It's, it's, there's two fees in there that relate to it. There's the application fee and then there's the advertising fee.
Gotcha. All right.
Uh, both of those.
There it is, up above there. Hundred dollar fee would be waived from July first to July first.
Right.
Right on. Okay. Okay, good. So, if you haven't registered by July first...
If you're, if you're not in, established before July first, uh, as the policy is written, uh, you would not have the opportunity to have the fees waived. So, what we're trying to do here, uh, or the intent of the policy is, as you recall, we are required to, to, um, establish a, a bylaw within the land use bylaw that, that permits, uh, short-term rentals under whatever conditions. And we've gone through that process and we've made it rather tight so that just about everybody, uh, will, will have to apply for a development agreement. And the concern was, well, aren't we just imposing a cost to operators who right now are not causing any problem in the community? Um, and we, and we indicated what, in that discussion, that it really was not our intent to upset those operators, but rather to allow them to become compliant with the provincial law.
Yeah.
And also not open the doors too wide so that it becomes a problem. This will get a more comprehensive review when we do the comprehensive municipal planning strategy review. But in the meantime, we'll go with this restrictive policy, uh, restrictive bylaw and we'll use this policy to alleviate the hardship that might otherwise be felt by the, by the current operators.
Right.
And so, this would require them, as it's written, to apply within that one-year window to get their development agreements in place. Um, and, you know, as you know, we don't have a staff planner at this point and so we're using contracted resources to assist us with that. Uh, as we get into this and as our, our contracted planners work through the process with us, we may come back to you as council and say, you know what? It's not possible to get all this work done. We have more applications than we can process and we may look at that date and say, uh, it needs to be extended or that we can revoke the policy if it get, it, once we get all the work done. So, we'll keep you posted, uh, through time if this does pass through council.
Okay. All right. Um, do we vote on that?
No.
Do I have a motion?
We do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Sorry, folks, get lost a little bit. Um, let's skip nine C. Nine D, uh, community asset donation fund policy. Councillor Heather. That staff, that staff be directed to review and rewrite the community asset donation fund policy to include a timeline and process by which the intended recipients are notified of the donation and a timeline and process for which funds are sent to the recipients, as well a process to ensure that as per the policy, annual recognition occurs. Did you want to speak to that? Are we good? Do you want to put your light on so we can? Yeah, go ahead.
Just for public information, the community asset donation program is a program where individuals and organizations can make donations, uh, to, to the town, um, and to a specific community asset. So, they would include an asset, maybe such things as trees, benches, um, garbage cans as we spoke of today, uh, a work of art, and it can also be a donation to a specific park for a specific purpose, um, or such things as the mar- to donations to the Mariner Center and to the Splash Park. So, those are just a few examples of what that community, community asset donation program can be used for and, and is used for. Um, the, you know, the public has given generously, uh, to the, to the program for all those things. And it's a great way to recognize and honor, uh, people through a lasting tribute or just a way to give back to your community. And so, um, what happens is, is the donation is made and it's made through, it comes through the town so that folks can get a, a tax receipt for their, for their donation and they specify what that donation is for. And the town is then to notify the recipient of, of the money, um, and, um, pass the money on to, to the recipient. Um, there has been issues with that, um, where the recipient hasn't always known, been notified that the money was, was sitting here waiting for them, I guess. And that has caused some, a little bit of confusion and discomfort in, in the community. So, I think that it's, we really need to have a process and a timeline where the money comes in, two days later, three days later, the recipient is notified, they know about it, they can collect the money and then they can graciously say thank you to, to, to the donor, um, and recognize the, the donation. Um, cause if they don't know about it, it's difficult to recognize the, the donor and that causes a little bit of embarrassment, so. And so, that was the initial part of the, um, of the motion. And then I was, I, so I was reading through the, the policy as it is written, I noted that part of the policy said that annually, um, the list of donors would be brought to and presented to town council and that they would be posted on the website. And I don't recall that having happened. So, I just thought that might be included in there as well as just a refresher on that.
Go ahead.
Yep, your worship, um, we can, we can do that. I just want to clarify one thing is that, is that with these donations and, and councillor Heather's listed up many, many, uh, successful projects that we've, we've been able to, to achieve. And there's many, many smaller projects where, where it's just a bench, I say just a bench, but it's a bench or it's a, a waste receptacle or whatever it is that, that people want to, want to donate. But they are making donations to the town.
Yeah.
The town is the recipient and that I want to be clear about because, uh, we do have agents or, uh, organizations who are working on our behalf, on the community's behalf to see projects completed, um, you know, that, that ultimately the projects are ours. So, Splash Park is ours through a partnership with, with our sister municipalities, but we are the owner. We are the owner of the, of the park in Milton. Um, we have a, a, a not-for-profit society that, that is doing a wonderful job in developing that. Um, so, there are some, some, uh, call them procedural issues that we need to, to iron out. I'm well aware of the, uh, of the, the issues that have arisen and, and we're working on, on that to sort it out. So, we'll, we'll look at the policy and see if we can tighten it up. But I just wanted to be clear, um, because it's come up, it just also come up, could we do this for other organizations? So, we can't. Uh, CRA takes a dim view when you're, when you're acting as an agent to, to get around CRA. That isn't the case here. These are projects, these are all projects that the town of Yarmouth, uh, in, at the end of the day owns and has on their books, uh, to do. So, that, that, uh, is, is the difference and, and just for your benefit as council, because we sometimes get that question, I want you to be aware. So, we'll, if the motion passes, of course, we'll look at this and we'll also look at the event or the, the proper recognition of all donors, um, and, uh, put that on our website.
Thank you. Councillor Lassner?
Um, so, did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay. And we haven't had a seconded?
Give them seconded.
Okay, so a second. Um, is there, is there, like, I know you mentioned benches or trash receptacles. Is there anything, like, is there somewhere that it's published, like, if you would like to make a dona- I, I mean, I know you can say, here's $50 or here's a hundred dollars, but if I wanted to put a bench in my father's name, for example, is there like a, a list of, I'm just thinking like, for my mother, often I can't find anything for Christmas, so I'll, I'll buy her a goat, which sounds ridiculous. But, um, you can buy a goat and it goes to a, it goes to Africa, um, into a community where they, you know, they get, um, milk and stuff from the goat and they use that and barter it and it, it helps save a village type of thing. Is there any, is there kind of like a, an infographic we might be able to make saying, like, if you would like to donate in any amount, you can, but if you, like specifically, if you would like to have a bench in somebody's name, this is the amount? Is that, is that something that's even doable?
Your worship?
Yeah.
Uh, your worship, that, that exists, um, you know, sort of the prices and the, and the assets. There are several examples within the policy with, with pictures and, and, uh, so that is, that is on our website. That in itself doesn't necessarily, you know, it isn't a, 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 a push promotion. It's there, it's pretty static. Uh, our website, I believe, is probably a page that talks about the community asset program. Again, it's, it's fairly static, but the information is there. If the question is, uh, should we periodically push a message out to the community to say, you know, thank you for all that you do in keeping our community beautiful? And by the way, if you want, if there's any, if there's any appetite to, to memorialize a, a friend, a family member, whatever, we have some options for that as well. Uh, certainly we can, we can look at doing that.
Heather, did you have your light on? You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any, anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Correspondence? No additions? In camera.
In camera.
Okay, motion to go in camera, folks.